All right, gang, let's call this meeting to order. It is May fifteenth, two thousand nine, at the great town of Batesburg Leesville Town Hall. This is our council work session. And at this time, moving on to item two, invocation. Mr. Simpkins, if you would, give an invocation for us, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. You're finished.
Yes, sir.
My God.
You said it, I know I ain't told you.
Freaking didn't leave on the rip.
It's okay. Let us pray.
Let's pray for him eating, not pizza.
Man. Gracious God, our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day's journey. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy that has brought us this far, God. And we don't believe you brought us this far to leave us. So, Lord, we ask that you come into our midst this evening, God, and be for us what we cannot be for ourselves. Lord, grant us love, joy, and peace, God, that we might exhibit patience, Lord, and the temperament, Father God, to be understanding of one another and our differences, but knowing that we all bind together in your love. We thank you right now for what you're about to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Very nice. Stand for the pledge, please. Mr. Gambrell, if you would, do the honors, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item four. This is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Proust. Do I have it second?
Second.
Um, I think I heard Ms. Whittle the loudest. Second. Any discussion?
Ms. Whittle.
Ms. Whittle. District one. This approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, district two?
Yes.
District three? District three?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my head was down. Uh, district four?
District four, both yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven, uh, seven? And I vote yes. The agenda has been approved. Thank you. Moving on to item five. Discussion topics. Item A, discussion of fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Um, at this time, I'd like to give the floor to Town Manager Ted Luckadoo.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, a couple things. Everyone has an agenda in front of them, and well, you have another packet, um, budget packet. Was able to analyze some data and update the numbers, current year-to-date revenues and expenses for each of the individual line items. So, those numbers were updated as of yesterday, as well, um, the previous highlighted line items that were in the budget, took all that out since we kind of made that clear last time. The highlighted line items that you will see now are those line items that have changed. We have updated some since the last council work session, and I will talk about those in just a few minutes. Um, the budget is in order. General fund first, in order of department, as it flows, and we will flow tonight. Um, and we're gonna pick back up on the general fund where we left off last time, but first, I'm going to go through those things that have changed. Do want to start with the general fund budget summary. Um, last time, another point to bring out real quick, um, we have balanced the general fund, utility fund, hospitality tax fund, and victims assistance funds at this point, and we will talk about those items that we did to balance that. So, there is a total balanced budget at this point for the entire budget of the town, and we'll go through before we need to balance it in just a few minutes. Um, right now, total projected revenue, and I forgot to change the revenue up top, that should reflect the total projected expenses that's down at the bottom. Four million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the general fund. Just didn't see that revenue when I was there, when I was trying to do this quickly earlier, but that is the projected revenue as well. So, some of the changes made to the general fund since the last time we were, um, together. Um, based on council's feedback about the increased recycling cost, there was eight thousand added in the general fund revenue budget, uh, to the garbage fees revenue line item, um, to which in the street department budget, we added that additional eight thousand as an expense going out as well. So, we were able to do, based on the feedback from the last work session. We did increase the current property tax in the general fund revenue budget up to one million, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, we added a little bit more from where we were last time, uh, based on where the current data is at for that. Uh, we did bring down the yard sale permits line item, a hundred dollars, um, after seeing another month's data, uh, we just felt like that needed to come down a little bit more. Um, again, the total budget of town's reflected in balance. The arson, I'm gonna move on. The, in the fire department budget, um, we're gonna get into some expense changes at this point, if you want to follow along. In the fire department budget, nothing in the council, um, at this point, um, administration budget, um, were there any changes made? The first stop will be the fire department. We did increase the vehicle maintenance and repair of two thousand dollars, uh, based on some increased costs that we have had, um, just some fire trucks and some new anticipated costs that we see for this coming year. Uh, we did insert the fire department's request for a new hose and gear dryer into the capital line item, that added an additional eighty-five hundred dollars into that. And that was it for fire department. On the expense side, changes made since the last budget you guys received. Everything else in that budget, those budgets have stayed the same. In the PD's budget, uh, we did include their request for body cam upgrades into the capital line item at seven thousand dollars. That was it in the PD's. That would be the last line item, and the police department budget are next to the last line item.
What about their request for, um, that you've done?
Looking at the money I had available to me, because one of the things that, that was added in was the forty-two thousand, five hundred into the miracle to account for two percent across the board, and when, after making those changes, um, you know, from a staff recommendation standpoint, we wanted to give the fire department, wanted to request the fleet department, and if we would've done the twenty-five thousand, there would've been nothing left to do.
No, I'm not gonna advocate for it. I just want, I know it was in there.
Right. And we're, at this point right now, we're only a year over what we try to replace the gun weapons with, and we'll, we'll circle back to that request next year. Uh, we did include in the street department budget, that was it for PD. Um, included in the street department budget, we did include five thousand for funding for one part-time litter control employee. One of the things that, that we have, uh, heard a lot about was the need to tackle more litter. Um, in the previous capital list that was sent out, we had given you a budget of eighty-four, right at eighty-four hundred dollars to, to do two litter control employees, but we pulled funding out to try and get one. We included three thousand in the fleet budget, uh, for the purchase of an air brake leak, that's supposed to be leak detector, not leak detector. In the non-departmental budget, we changed the town event line item, adding a thousand dollars to that, to move it to a total of five thousand dollars. Just, we continue to have increased calls for town events, and felt like we, a thousand couldn't go to any one of the other capital items, and it fit, so we added a thousand to the town event line item. And again, in the merit cost of living line item, in the general fund, non-departmental, we added in the forty-two thousand, five hundred, which would be staff recommendation for a two percent cost of living for all general fund employees. That, that's the changes that were made since the, the last work session to the general fund. Any questions, comments, concerns with regards to that?
Ted, do you think some of the, the requests that were made, are we leaving out any corely essential items?
I, I will tell you, there's, there's pertinent capital in there, and, I mean, some of those calls, I, I think next year, we, we will be at the last year of our lease purchase, our five-year lease purchase, which is going to open a door, um, for some capital. I can tell you that the majority of that capital far exceeded what we had to work with, unless we want to open the door to any discussion of, of potential tax increases or things like that, to create opportunity for some capital this year. Um, if we want to talk about something alone in mind, we, we could, but I, I think we have an opportunity to really tackle some capital next year with the lease purchase ending, and we'll be able to do one. All right? You all want to move into the hospitality tax, which is next?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it. Did we get a copy of that?
I have something. I'll copy it.
I mean, that's fine. I mean, there's really not much to cover.
Yeah, all right. So, if you look at the back of the utility, uh, go to the end of the utility budget, um, there'll be victims assistance, which we, we tackled that. It should be the very last in your packet, the very last staple pages in your packet.
Okay. Sorry. I missed it.
All right. So, projected H-tax revenue, um, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what we have budgeted for this year. We've got only three months worth of revenue data for hospitality tax at this point. Um, we, we feel like four seventy-five, it, it could potentially be higher, but we don't know with only three months, and we don't know what the rest of the year's gonna do. We feel comfortable with a budget amount for the next fiscal year of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, that we can definitely hit that mark. Um, it, but it is possible that we, we couldn't see that amount as well. From January through March, we've received a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Currently, we have projected revenues at four hundred and seventy-five thousand, which balances the hospitality tax budget out. Um, we have not funded at this point, again, council's directive to date for, for town staff is for us to budget the money to go into a hospitality tax revenue account, and that's the way we've got it reflected to, to zero this budget out. Does not mean that we cannot bring, um, some ideas to the table for discussion to budget this year, but as of right this second, we've got it budgeted for seventy-five to continue to go into the bank account and, and not be spent. With that said, the one thing I did not pull up, if you'll give me one second, is we have a list of ideas for hospitality tax expenses this year. Uh, Mayor, I don't know what the committee has, has come up with any ideas that, that can be shared, but I know staff has some ideas, certainly don't look at these as much as we're asking for it, as we're just kind of putting some ideas out there on things that we could consider doing, um, should council want to budget some funds for this year. Y'all give me one second to get that up.
Mr. Mayor, do we, do we want to go into the specifics at this time, or just the budget?
I mean...
Do we want to talk about ideas?
If y'all want to run through utility fund real quick, we can circle back to this part, if y'all want to.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
If y'all would rather just run through utility fund and get that done.
That's fine.
Okay. Minimize this, get this. Okay, utility fund budget summary. Again, the revenue should reflect what is showing on the total projected expenses. My eye was not catching that, the revenue part underneath the big bowl at the top. Uh, revenue should reflect three million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred, with total projected expenses at three million, two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred, for a balanced budget in the utility fund. Some highlights, um, with regards to the utility fund revenue, if you want to pull that budget up, you need to follow along. We have increased projected water cell revenue, based on the, the current data that we have. Based on the most recent data, we've also increased the base rates, uh, by twelve thousand dollars. Ridge springs water consumption continues to increase on an annual basis, um, and we, so we have increased that budget line item. Bank interest, um, last year, we, we, we didn't really know what to protect, um, and I don't think we budgeted for, for the bank interest, it was brand-new last year. Based on the current trend we're going, we, we think around eighteen thousand dollars a year in interest, um, would be the right mark to put that at, based on what we've been bringing in.
God, that's new this year.
Sweet account, yeah.
Mine shows twenty-two thousand, so eighteen.
Does it? Is it, is it how?
Four plus eighteen, twenty, okay.
What's that? I'm right.
Yeah.
Let me get it open, too. Right, in, increased eighteen thousand dollars, not eighteen thousand, but we increased it by eighteen thousand. Um, again, last year being so new, we just really didn't know what kind of returns we were gonna get on the money. Um, we've got a much better idea this year, um, based on the past year. Base fees increased, um, I covered that one, sorry.
Yep.
Increased the impact fee revenue, um, we have continued to see increases in impact fees, and a lot of that is mostly due to the, the commercial developments that have been going in, as well as the residential homes that have been being built. Um, we feel confident in moving that number. As far as an overview, kind of, of all the expenses within the utility fund, not individually departmental, we'll go through that in a couple minutes, but just an overview, the current recommended budget that you guys have, reflects a two percent cost of living for all utility staff as well, and we have put that into the non-departmental cost of living line item. Each utility fund departmental budget accounts for the half a percent increase in employer medical contributions, uh, that took effect January first. Uh, as I stated with the general fund at the last meeting, workers compen, we did receive workers' compensation rates, and pretty much most departments were reduced in, in what we're being charged for workers' compensation. Uh, our, all the budgets do account for the one percent increase this year in retirement contributions. Um, same with general fund, electricity cost, and I will tell you, we've got significant electricity costs on the utility side, so we were able to bring some of those line items down, a fairly significant amount, uh, due to the fifteen percent reduction by S E and G, well, Dominion Energy now. Um, quick overview of the expenses on a pie chart here, if you want to see how the expenses are distributed, based on percentage. We are putting twenty percent of our, uh, expenses into the reserve account on an annual basis. Um, debt service, which is the industrial park, uh, bond payment, and, um, partial payment for the town hall facility, makes up six percent of that, that's what, that's what's encompassed in that.
Ted, you have my draft in back, page one, the non-departmental utilities, merit pool.
You want me to go to the non-depart, I'll get to that budget.
You ain't got there yet?
I haven't, wait, you talking about the general fund, or the utility?
Utility.
We'll get there in just a couple minutes. Non-departmental. Here we are, it won't even take a couple minutes. Uh, current budget amount for the non-departmental budget for the utility fund is one million, eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two. This is thirty-one percent of the utility budget. Um, this does reflect, as I said, the non-departmental reflects debt service as well as the, the reserve and non-departmental, um, all three of those that I had in this pie chart, right here, the debt service, reserve, and non-departmental, that is all encompassed in, into that budget. Um, senior assistance fund, we covered this. Last meeting about general fund, moving that over to the utility fund is for, you will see that reflected in that budget. And in the cost of living line item, you will see that the seventeen thousand has been added in to reflect that two percent cost of living for utility staff. All right?
So, that question I asked you about the merit pool, that's that seventeen thousand?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't show up in, in sound?
So, what we'll do, we reflected there to show it as merit, if, if approved, we will divide that out based on each individual department. If you guys, once you approve the budget, if you approve that two percent, we'll, we will make that adjustment to each department in what needs to be reflected there. It's just a lot easier to put it there for the sake of discussion and budgeting and getting the budget approved than it is to go through and alter the FICA and the, the retirement and the salaries for each of those budgets. And if it's not approved, then we have to undo all that and redo it, so. Utility administration budget accounts for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, we did, one of the bigger changes in this is that we did bring the, the salary portion of that down with, with Tim leaving. Um, we do anticipate bringing that salary amount down to about the sixty thousand dollar mark at, at the max, and we base that budget on sixty-two versus, or sixty versus the eighty-two five that was previously approved there. Um, when we have Tim on board, he was able to, because of his PE license and, and PE background, he was able to assist us with some small design work that we didn't have to go out and have done. Um, but if we're hiring someone that's not a PE, we will have, we have, we're gonna have to allocate a little bit more to, uh, professional services for more smaller engineering jobs that we may need to have done throughout the year that he typically saved us on. So, you will see that the professional services line item did go up based on that.
And that reflects that increase, that eleven thousand?
What's that? I'm sorry.
And that reflects the increase. We, we took professional services up by eleven thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is that your anticipation that he would be able to?
A lot of smaller jobs are, are a couple thousand dollars here, three thousand dollars here for some of the smaller stuff and, and that he would typically do, so we're, we're kind of accounting on, you know, three to four smaller engineering jobs that, that may need to be done throughout the year. Also reflected in this is, you'll see the Gilbert Summit, the water that we purchased from Gilbert Summit to serve system number two, um, the Lake Murray system that we have. There are more homes being built out near the Harbor Watch area and around that lake area that's on the system, which is leading to more water sales, which means more water purchase. That's, that's increasing the amount of revenue we bring in, but it's also going to increase the expense that we have paid Gilbert Summit for that water, so, uh, we've moved it up. And if you'll see, the actual year-to-date, it's forty-seven thousand spent, and our budget was forty-seven thousand for the year, so we bumped it up to sixty thousand. Moving into the water treatment budget. Current budget of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we don't anticipate any major repairs to the water treatment facility at this point right now, and, and we are awaiting the outcome of, of the consulting team's study. Um, based on what we've been doing the past couple years, we think reducing that by fourteen thousand would still allow us enough money for those, those repairs that we do have to do. We have some pumps go out from time to time that we need to replace, um, but we do feel like the, um, water facility repairs would be sufficient at the sixty thousand we put in the budget versus the, the seventy-four thousand that we had this past year. Again, a lot of electricity use, uh, on the water, um, system, so we were, we feel comfortable bringing that down by about fifteen thousand this year. Um, we are having to increase that chemical cost up due to more water being treated and sold. Um, we're gonna treat more water, it's gonna lead to more chemicals needing to be used, so that's pulling that line item up as well. And laboratory supplies, um, we've had, a lot of that's just increased in cost on us for lab supplies, and as that cost has gone up, we need to increase a little bit as well. Utility billing budget. Current budget amount, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred. Um, again, we've added on a lot of new customers, uh, between the Lake Murray system and here in town, uh, so that's increasing the amount of postage money that we need, so, as well as some printing costs, um, so we've increased the postage as well. Funds have been budgeted to purchase, uh, the new Office 2019 operating system from staff, which has been throughout numerous budgets, um, and written in the justifications, um, just trying to move everybody from a technology standpoint to the newest Office 2019. Um, again, electricity cost, there's a shared cost on the, on town halls electricity with, um, the billing department, since they are housed out of here, and, and that's a shared cost, so was able to decrease the electricity down. All right? Waste water.
How much? That is wastewater.
Current budget amount, and...
Billy got hooked together with wastewater.
Current budget amount, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, zero sixty-eight dollars. Um, again, increases, just like water plant side, increases made to lab supplies and chemical costs. Um, we do have some increased, um, treatment taking place at wastewater treatment plant. Uh, largest increase made is to the sewer facilities repairs and maintenance. Um, two years in a row, we've had, it's pretty typical of us to have bearings go out, discs that need to be replaced on the aeration equipment, and that's something Council McCain's brought up about aeration equipment. It, it is old, it does lead to a lot of repair and maintenance costs, and that's why we hope to go for the combine grant this year to put that floating aeration in, it's a lot less mechanical components, but we're not at that point. But last year, we had major repairs, um, that needed to be made to one of our clarifiers that really drove that cost up. This year, it was our centrifuge. Um, we had a, a minor fire in our centrifuge, and it burned up, and we had to rent a temporary belt press that was around thirty thousand dollars, as well as fix the centrifuge equipment, and all of that really drove that cost up this year. So, any additional money that we had, we applied it to this line item, um, to bring it up as much as possible. Another large increase that we've seen is in the amount of sludge that we're having to have removed from the wastewater treatment plant. Um, that's a fifteen thousand dollar increase that we've budgeted for this year, uh, based on the, the cost that where we're at now. You'll see that we had sixty thousand for this year, and then we're at fifty-eight, and it's just that the plant's been having more sludge, and with that, we, we...
You want me to go to the non-depart- I'll get to that budget.
You ain't got there yet?
I haven't- wait, you talking about the general fund? Or the utility?
We do.
We'll get here in just a couple minutes. Non-departmental. Here we are, it won't even take a couple minutes. Uh, current budget amount for the non-departmental budget for the utility fund is one million, eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two. This is thirty-one percent of the utility budget. Um, this does reflect, as I said, the non-departmental reflects debt service as well as the, the reserve and non-departmental. Um, all three of those that I had in this patch are right here, the debt service, reserve, and non-departmental, that is all encompassed in, into that budget. Um, senior assistance fund, we covered this. Last meeting about general fund, moving that over to the utility fund is for, you will see that reflected in that budget. And in the cost of living line item, you will see that the seventeen thousand has been added in to reflect that two percent cost of living for utilities.
So, that question I asked you about the merit pool, that's that seventeen thousand?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't show up in, in sounds?
So what would we, we reflected there to show it as a merit, if, if approved, we will divide that out based on each individual department. If you guys, once you approve the budget, if you approve that two percent, we'll, we will make that adjustment to each department and what needs to be reflected there. It's just a lot easier to put it there for the sake of discussion and budgeting and getting the budget approved than it is to go through and, and alter the FICA and the, the retirement and the salaries for each of those budgets. And if it's not approved, then we have to undo all that and redo it, so. Utility administration budget accounts for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, we did, one of the bigger changes in this is that we did bring the, the salary portion of that down with, with Tim leaving. Um, we do anticipate bringing that salary amount down to about the sixty thousand dollar mark at, at the max. And we base that budget on sixty-two versus, or sixty versus the eighty-two-five that was previously approved there. Um, when we have Tim on board, he was able to, because of his PE license and, and PE background, he was able to assist us with some small design work that we didn't have to go out and have done. Um, but if we're hiring someone that's not a PE, we will have, we have, we're gonna have to allocate a little bit more to, uh, professional services for more smaller engineering jobs that we may, may need to have done throughout the year that he typically saved us on. So you will see that the professional services line item did go up based on that.
And that reflects that increase, that eleven thousand?
What's that, I'm sorry?
And that reflects the increase. We, we took professional services up by eleven thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is that your anticipation that he would be able to?
A lot of smaller jobs are, are a couple thousand dollars here, three thousand dollars here for some of the smaller stuff and, and that he would typically do. So we're, we're kind of accounting on, you know, three to four smaller engineering jobs that, that may need to be done throughout the year. Um, also reflected in this is you'll see the Gilbert Summit, the water that we purchased from Gilbert Summit to serve system number two, um, the Lake Murray system that we have. There are more homes being built out near the Harbor Watch area and around that lake area that's on the system, which is leading to more water sales, which means more water purchase. That's, that's increasing the amount of revenue we bring in, but it's also going to increase the expense that we have paid Gilbert Summit for that water. So, uh, we've moved it up. And if you'll see, the actual year-to-date, forty-seven thousand spent, our budget was forty-seven thousand for the year. So we bumped it up to sixty thousand. Moving into the water treatment budget. Current budget of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we don't anticipate any major repairs to the water treatment facility at this point right now. And, and we are awaiting the outcome of, of the consulting team's study. Um, based on what we've been doing the past couple of years, we think reducing that by fourteen thousand would still allow us enough money for those, those repairs that we do have to do. We have some pumps go out from time to time that we need to replace. Um, but we do feel like the, um, water facility repairs would be sufficient at the sixty thousand we put in the budget versus the, the seventy-four thousand that we had this past year. Um, again, a lot of electricity use on the water, um, system. So we were, we feel comfortable bringing that down by about fifteen thousand this year. We are having to increase that chemical cost up due to more water being treated and sold. Um, we're gonna treat more water, it's gonna lead to more chemicals needing to be used. So that's pulling that line item up as well. And laboratory supplies, um, we've had a lot of that's just increased in cost on us for lab supplies. And as that cost has gone up, we need to increase a little bit as well. Utility billing budget. Current budget amount, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred. Um, again, we've added on a lot of new customers between the Lake Murray system and here in town. Uh, so that's increasing the amount of postage money that we need, so, as well as some printing costs. Um, so we've increased the postage as well. Funds have been budgeted to purchase, uh, the new Office 2019 operating system from staff, which has been throughout numerous budgets. Um, and written in the justifications, um, just trying to move everybody from a technology standpoint to the newest Office 2019. Um, again, electricity costs, there's a shared cost on the, on town hall's electricity with, uh, the billing department since they are housed out of here and, and that's a shared cost. So we was able to decrease the electricity down. All right, wastewater. Current budget amount. Billy got hooked together with wastewater. Current budget amount, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, zero sixty-eight dollars. Um, again, increases just like water plant side, increases made to lab supplies and chemical costs. Um, we do have some increased, um, treatment taking place at wastewater treatment plant. Uh, largest increase made is to the sewer facilities repairs and maintenance. Um, two years in a row, we've had, it's pretty typical of us to have bearings go out, discs that need to be replaced on the aeration equipment, and that's something Council McCain brought up about aeration equipment. It, it is old, it does lead to a lot of repair and maintenance costs, and that's why we hope to go for the combine grant this year to put that floating aeration in. It's a lot less mechanical components, but we're not at that point. But last year, we had major repairs, um, that needed to be made to one of our clarifiers that really drove that cost up. This year, it was our centrifuge. Um, we had a, a minor fire in our centrifuge and it burned up. And we had to rent a temporary belt press that was around thirty thousand dollars as well as fix the centrifuge equipment. And all of that really drove that cost up this year. So any additional money that we had, we applied it to this line item, um, to bring it up as much as possible. Another large increase that we've seen is in the amount of sludge that we're having to have removed from the wastewater treatment plant. That's a fifteen thousand dollar increase that we've budgeted for this year. Uh, based on the, the, the cost that where we're at now, you'll see that we had sixty thousand for this year and then we're at fifty-eight. And it's just that the plant's been having more sludge. And with that, we, we need to move that line item up. Electricity cost, again, there's significant amounts of electricity used on the sewer side. Um, so we were able to bring that down by about twenty thousand dollars.
Solar panels. Solar panels.
Solar panels. Or just keep getting into the polar rates now. Utility distribution, uh, total budget of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. We're having more callouts, and when there's more callouts, um, that's leading to an, an increase in some overtime costs. Um, we do recommend moving that overtime up about three thousand dollars. We think that should be sufficient based on where we're at at this point. A lot of that, too, is determined by extremely cold winters, line breaks, our guys are, are out more often at nighttime. Um, so it's kind of dependent upon weather conditions a lot in the winter time, too. Uh, but they do have to come out fairly often into evenings to make some repairs or to handle sewer backup calls.
Are we keeping track of those callouts so that we can proactively fix some of those things if they're consistent?
They are all reported on a monthly basis.
There's one that we've talked about, but do we track that?
We do. We do.
Salad too.
Eat some more pizza, Teddy.
How about ordinance compensation?
So, uh, so it actually, look in, in, as a part of the monthly council report, a lot of times we put in there where we go each month for callouts and the types of callouts that, that we go out to. But we do, we do track that, our work order management system, um, keeps a history of everywhere we've been. We, we do have that ability to pinpoint areas where we're having continued significant issues. And there's, there's two on the sewer side that I know right now, we're, we're gonna need to address here soon because we've got some continued issues going on there, so.
So we have the data?
We do.
And is, is someone tracking that?
We do. All right, let's see. Uh, water and sewer line materials line item, uh, we did have to increase that up. A lot of what's driving that increase is more callouts can lead to that because that's more supplies that are used. Um, but as well, the cost of water meters and, and water line material, valves and hydrants, those costs continue to increase on us. So we need to allocate a little bit more to that. And the fuel pri- prices are continuing to climb up a little bit. I know it's that time of the year that, that you get some increase in fuel prices. But we need, this is one budget where we need, need to allocate more to fuel based on use.
Teddy, you have mentioned something we discussed several months ago about employees retiring and us building into the budget, uh, trainees, is that still a functional?
So we did budget for some of those entry-level positions in the last budget.
Okay, last.
And, and in the current budget we're in now when they were hired and, and brought in.
So that reflects them in you?
That's reflected in the current budget we're in now.
Does this carry over from the current budget to the new, okay.
And that's, that's the highlights of the utility budget, um, any, any question, any more questions? With regards to utilities?
Do you anticipate an increase in overtime?
In, in the utility distribution, I do.
The rate of overtime, Charles, or the amount of overtime?
Well, we, we just have the rate, I mean, the amount here. Of three thousand dollar increase from, uh,
Right.
current year.
And again, we, we, we can't, we don't always know how much they're gonna be called out. Some years are more than others, but just in looking at the, the past two to three years, we, we feel like we need to pull that up about another three thousand to, to hit a good budgetary mark.
So we're at balance?
We're at balance.
On general fund and utility?
On, on all, on all funds, we're balanced at this point.
On that senior paper you sent out with, uh, proposed, uh, department heads, you gave us an amount of money after we put in the two percent. And there was another figure that I just flat, can't even remember right now. How much money did we have left over, funny money?
Funny money, that, that's, if you go, let's, let me go back here. So going back into here, you'll, you'll see some of these amounts based on the items that we, we built in. Again, the forty-two-five was, was added in. But because we were able to increase some of the revenues, that increased it up. But we, we, I can't tell you that the eighty-five hundred dollars for the hose dri- uh, gear dryer, um, that was in that list. The, the seven thousand for the body cams, um, the five thousand for the, the litter control employees. So right now, you're at fifteen-five, twenty thousand, five hundred. And then you got the twenty-three thousand, five hundred for the, uh, air brake leak detector. So it was around twenty-three-five.
Twenty-three-five?
Correct.
I have a, uh, a question, uh, probably for the, uh, mayor since, uh, we have implemented the hospitality tax and the committee has began to meet, understand. Now, we haven't received any report from that committee.
Yeah, I can give a list of, of items that have kind of come out of the, the meetings that we've had thus far. Um, the most discussion, uh, well, I'm just gonna read down the list. Um, the committee hasn't had a chance to prioritize, but I'll just read just a list and, and just kind of, if you would, hold your, your judgment. Um, just, let me just read through the list. Um, certainly help with park idea on Pine Street, um, from the BBA project. The old historic post office, possibility of a chamber office or a museum. Outside of our ordinance, uh, suggestions for town hall would be improvement for visitors and prospective citizens, an activity kiosk, uh, landscaping, signage, parking lot, uh, lighting. Um, ideas for town hall, again, that would be outside the ordinance. Um, of course, Haynes Auditorium, um, um, parks, um, ideas about the parks. A water splash pad, fountains, uh, new playground equipment, new restrooms.
Splash pad found in the dog park?
Dog park, sir?
That you were speaking in reference to, uh, possible splash pad or fountain in both parks?
Well, I mean, it's not, I mean, that would be up to us, yeah. I mean, these are just a list of ideas, yeah. And, um, also on the list, new signage, uh, welcome signs at entrances, uh, to the town. You know, we have a couple, um, more welcome signs, um, uh, more decorative lighting poles. Let's see, the old Burlington Mill site, uh, ideas were thrown out for that. Of course, it's not in the ordinance currently, but, um, dog park, townhouses, water park, amphitheater, all kinds of things like that thrown out. Um, certainly events, um, uh, possible facade grants for businesses. The, the most conversation seemed to be, the most interest seemed to be around new signage, um, coming into the main corridors in town. And that seemed to be the, the, had the, uh, biggest percentage of discussion.
Will the committee report to council and the, uh?
I mean, that's pretty much the report, uh, yeah, I think they can, yeah. I mean, their job is not to bring, uh, their, their job is to bring ideas and thoughts, it's not to bring estimates and stuff. That's, that's for, once we decide what we want to do, we either have to, either that's to fall inside the ordinance that we have, or that we change the ordinance. And then, you know, give the directive to, to, uh, town hall to, to do an RFP.
Was there any?
Or RFQ.
Any mention of Christmas decorations in there?
Um, not on the, not on the list that we have right now, but that's, I mean, that, that's part of, um, I mean.
That would be outside of the ordinance as it's currently written, wouldn't it?
Well, uh, you could do Christmas things inside of the downtown districts.
But it wouldn't, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking townwide, but that, you know, anything townwide is not, it's too broad to be in the confines of the ordinance.
Would it?
Unless it's amended.
Well, yeah, the ordinance can be amended to, to address that, but I think in its current position.
Need to make sure our conversation kind of pulls into the budget so that we're not off of our agenda. I would.
Well, how's balance the tax as a part of the budget?
Yes, sir.
We, we showing four hundred and seventy-five thousand currently, uh, in the reserve account, hospitality tax reserve account. Anticipating a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, um, for the next fiscal year, is that right, Teddy?
I'm sorry, Mr. Charles, I was staring at the question, what was that?
Yeah, you're right, and, and I think, uh, staff also has recommendations and whatever recommendations that council, council may have.
One of the things that was, uh, sold to council and the public when we were working on the hospitality tax, trying to get it implemented, was that some of these funds coming in as hospitality funds, uh, might be used to offset some of the expenses in the general fund. Uh, am I right about that?
I think it was the opposite of that, actually.
Whatever, I was told draft the ordinance, I was told draft the ordinance with brick and mortar projects and that I was to make sure the money was not going to be transferred from the general, to pay for general fund items. I was specifically told to draft it where it could not be, to pay for something that was currently being paid for by the general fund.
And that's where it was drafted as it, as it exists, as it exists. Yeah, ma'am?
That was, uh, that was one of the selling points of them implementing the hospitality tax. Um, I guess we would have to look closer at the, uh, the exact ordinance, uh, language or verbiage and whatnot. But if there are areas in the, um, general fund that the hospitality tax funds would possibly qualify to cover, wouldn't that be something we should look at?
We could certainly look at it.
And that would free up general fund funds for other, um, areas and projects.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on that. I, I think it, it would be irresponsible of the council to shift funds. We, we did not, in my opinion, we did not sell the hospitality tax to help fund the town. We, we sold it to enhance what we can do within the town. So whatever we do with the budget, I, I personally feel it'd be horribly inefficient of us to even explore shifting funds. Now, we may use funds in different ways, but the hospitality tax, in my personal opinion, is hospitality tax and should not be shifted at all to the town budget. I, I, I think we said to the public that that would not happen. That's my recollection.
So, um, when you say that, do you mean like, there's a line item in the budget for parks and recreation? Which is what we were just talking about, about splash pads and, and playground equipment. Are you saying that, that that money should not, it's not the same kind of deal?
Well, I'm not sure, because if, if we use that money within the town budget.
We're not, I'm not talking about train.
But let me finish, let, let me just answer the question. If we use that money for our own children, adults, for our own town, we want to build up our parks, whether we have a hospitality tax or not.
Right.
But if we then said, okay, we want to build a water park and that will bring so much revenue into our town, I can see how that could easily be funded with a hospitality tax. I don't think we can go into our own parks right now for maintenance kinds of things and, and things that we would do normally for the benefit of our own citizens.
What's that, that's a duplication of?
Not the same thing.
Well, help, help me clarify that then.
A, a, uh, doggy park, a kitty park in one of the, both of the parks, a fountain, uh, you mentioned a water slide. Those would be things added to the park to enhance the appeal of the park.
True, true.
Why, why would those funds?
But what would it?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that those couldn't be funded from the hospitality tax. I'm just saying that I don't think we can show that we're gonna use that hospitality tax to shift it to the budget and then pay it out of the budget. But, um, do you understand?
No, it's a, a park is a park, I can, if you have, all right, same if we was gonna go to the, um, to depot and we were gonna, um, uh, renovate it, right? So, I mean, we got just a bunch of chump change in the general fund, um, account for that, right? So it's not enough to do anything with, really.
Why we have a hospitality tax?
What?
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah, that's why we have the hospitality tax, right?
Right, that's what we, that's what we thought, so just instead of, um, uh, putting that even as a line item in our budget, because there's not enough money to do anything, just use the, use, use the, uh, hospitality tax money to do it. Because there's more money, so it's a big pool of money, you don't want a half a million dollars.
Uh, specifically which line item?
Because, so we can hear.
Ma'am?
Because, so we can hear.
So you, you have, uh, the line items, uh, we, we would.
If I, if I could, thank you. I want to direct, I want to give the town manager the floor and direct us to the line item that you're talking about for Parks and Rec and what it would be.
Uh, the Parks and Rec.
What that line item, what that line item covers?
Anything Parks and Rec at this point would be within the street department budget.
You're talking about peanuts in the budget?
If you, if you wanna go.
Right, no, I, I understand what, I under- I get your point, but I want to, I want the town manager to now take me to the line item.
Parks and Rec, you would, you would go to the public works, uh, AKA, street department budget for Parks and Rec. Uh, at the bottom of the first page, there's a Parks and Rec maintenance and repair line item. Sixty-four hundred dollars. The other Parks and Rec, there's two Parks and Rec line items in this. There's Parks and Rec utility for sixty-three hundred, so.
What was the first number?
There's sixty-four hundred that's budgeted right now for Parks and Rec maintenance and repair. And there's sixty-three hundred is for Parks and Rec utilities.
Can you put it up on the screen or something?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can, I can.
So that could be used, so to bring in new sand or put in a, a, a new swing. But you're right, it couldn't be used to come in and put a water park. That, that would be.
Right, that's what I'm saying, this is, why don't we, uh, use, uh, hospitality tax money just to take care of the parks? And then what you're not splitting here is about, if it, if it's for utilities, whatever, you're gonna have a million dollars in there, just use that money.
And so the description of that and the items that are inside this are important to the laws of the hospitality tax. So that's what, it, that's what, um.
What we have, uh, is, is allowed, many orders away from it. That would be considered a brick and mortar, if you're gonna put in playgrounds, if you're gonna put a dog park, that's allowed. What I'm hearing talking about is not allowed the way it's written is the maintenance. If you're cutting the grass already, that's a maintenance issue that's already paying for it from the general fund that the way it's written right now could not be used in hospitality.
The way that we wrote it.
You can rewrite it, dude.
We can rewrite it, we have to rewrite it if we want to do this.
I just want to be clear, the reason it's written the way it is is because I was told to make sure we were not gonna shift something that we're already paying for over the hospitality tax and we're already paying for maintenance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
That was one of the main reasons of implementing the hospitality tax, that things we were not able to do. Now we have additional funds to do this.
But it would be through building, brick and mortar projects.
Well, I understand what council is saying, he is correct.
He is.
But I think that, um,
But I think that, um, uh, council, because we, we had never had a hospitality tax, and we were really pushed to, um, put together some legislation and ordinance without really knowing anything that, you know, anything concrete about what we were going to do, so we did give him that direction and those parameters. What, what I'm saying is now that we do know what we don't, what, you know, what it's all about, um, the maintenance, if, if we're going to, if, if you put a splash park, which is brick, brick and mortar building, right, you're going to increase the amount of people that's using the park. So, therefore, the maintenance is going to be a little bit higher than we normally would have. So, I think that we might want to, uh, look at it to anticipate, you know, more people using the park.
Let me give an example, in the, uh, depot, uh, say a family wanted to have a reunion in Bay Street, Leesville, and they wanted to use the depot park, um, and they want to stay all day out there, they couldn't use that park because there isn't, there are no facilities there.
Right.
So, why couldn't the hospitality tax money be used?
You said you can do that.
It absolutely can, right now, today.
You said you can do that, it's just the cutting the grass part of it.
Right now, today.
You can't, you can't use hospitality.
Well, you can't go out there in the grass, it wastes time.
I understand, but that's the way we wrote it, that's what we told him to write it, that's the way you wrote it.
But it's, it's already pledged to maintain that grass, is what we're, we've been maintaining that grass for years in Bay Street.
Yeah.
We had no choice, because we didn't have the additional funds.
Well, now, we have made, maintained that grass.
Well, very well.
Well, let's not, let's not go down that rabbit hole, let's stay on.
But, I'm just saying, but, so, what, what we would have to do is, and this is open, I mean, we, we, we're going to, we're getting ready to make an ordinance, a budget is an ordinance. So, if you want to amend that part of the hospitality, I think you could, you were able to do that. So that, um, you know, I don't know if you're just going to do it for this one particular thing, but now that we have a better idea of what, um, hospitality is, what the money is.
Well, I think it would be good, I mean, the committee-
You're going to cut the grass a lot more now, you want more people using it.
If we're going to, if we are going to amend the ordinance, I think, um, right now, it, it does not cover new signs coming into town, and that's, that did have the most discussion. So, in, in amending that ordinance, we could-
But I'll tell you, that's something we, that could be on our list.
Add, I would suggest that, you know, out of respect for the committee and, and the times that they did meet, that we add that to the ordinance as well.
That's fine, I think we need to.
Just a question, at the, uh-
Just tell them that Dreamcatcher is, uh, designer.
Please put a park.
It'll be for procurement, you know.
I'm going to give you a whole case of candy to sell.
He's messing with you, he's just messing with you.
Mr. Taylor, and the old, we're going to put placey on the park.
Did you just tell me?
Hold on one second, hold on.
Go ahead, sorry.
Wasn't there a splash, splash pool down there?
There was.
At the depot.
Now, does hospitality tax cover redoing that and bringing it up to code?
You can't redo it.
It's, it's gone now.
It's gone, she put a, she put a-
It was demoed out, she dug it up.
Oh, it's gone.
Yeah, she dug it up and put a, she dug it up.
So, we could build a new one.
Oh, it would be probably better.
We could build a new one, with, with restrooms, so, and a, and a shelter, so that if a family wanted to come in and have a reunion, they'd have all the facilities there that they need.
Exactly.
But only you making a case for us taking that out of that general fund, line item now, because if you have facilities, we haven't been maintaining facilities down there, and you're going to put that more work on the street department, we haven't, we've been cutting grass, but we haven't been cleaning bathrooms and maintaining the splash pad. So, so you need, that's something that you, you need to take out of that general fund and put it in, that's what I'm advocating.
Yeah, but hospitality tax, you don't pay for recurring costs, right?
Yeah, it's maintenance, you can pay for main, we decided that we didn't want to pay for maintenance.
Oh, oh, oh.
Council decided, council decided we weren't.
Why don't we, uh, ask the administration to look at the, uh, hospitality, um, statutes? And, uh, to see what might be available and report to the committee, and then the committee can, uh, take that information.
I think you've got a list thing for that. I, I'll recap something that the attorney said is, you can pay for, for the maintenance and repair, by, by statute you can, but it was council at adoption that said it by ordinance that it couldn't be, it doesn't mean that it can't be changed to allow for the maintenance and repair costs, it's just the way the ordinance is currently written, it do, it doesn't allow for the maintenance and repair costs.
And, and I think the actual discussion was this, is that hospitality tax, next council may both be awaiting it, and what the discussion was, y'all had, was we don't want to move something from the general fund over to hospitality tax, and then hospitality tax go away, and the town have a, have a.
You can just put it back, that was, that was, that was, that was the question y'all had in directing me to write it, where you couldn't move something from the general fund over to hospitality.
And just because, just because you, uh, this is mutual, so we were just giving it our way, as we go, we're going to have to make changes and adjustments. Remember now, you can just throw out the money.
I'm not saying you can't make changes, I'm just saying we're going to have to buy.
That's all we're saying.
Right, right, and that, thank you for the, yeah, and thank you for the clarification.
And, and Charles, you can, you can, you can keep the line item, you just don't have to put no money in that line item. So, the line item doesn't go away, Parks and Rec, that line item, the general fund does not go away, you just didn't put money in it because you're using the hospitality fund to fund it at this point. And anytime you want to go back, you can go back, it's not, it's not a big deal.
Right.
We have done it.
But, now, I think, hey, we, um, I think I sent you an email, is that appropriate for where we are here?
Yeah, ma'am, I think you're in that avenue.
Okay, because then was also a recommendation from the, um, from the hospitality committee about paving, uh, Oak Street, from, um, number one all the way back for downtown Batesburg, and I think that is, um, if I may, if I may.
Is our agenda tonight to discuss what we're going to do with the hospitality tax?
Well-
Or is our agenda to pass, to talk about the budget?
Well, I think this, in my opinion, this is part of it.
Hold on, hold on, one at a time, one at a time.
You know what I mean, we are, what I would say, in a, in a budget talk, right now, I have it budgeted based on the last directive given to me, and that is to, to put it into a reserve account, but if there was a time where you would want to budget into any individual line items, it would be as a part of the budget to be passed with the budget, if there's any ideas you wanted to. So, if you wanted to repave Oak Street, and, and I actually have a fairly accurate quote on this, just to show you, um, the cause, as of October twelfth, two thousand eighteen, just reached out to somebody who was paving that, that Pine Street vacant lot out there, had a look to give ballpark figures for Oak Street, uh, from US one to the railroad track, it would be around forty-two thousand dollars, and from the railroad track to highway twenty-three would be around seventy thousand dollars. So, you're looking at around a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to, to repave Oak Street in that downtown district.
Ted, do you know if that was just overlaying the existing asphalt, or if it was newing and?
That, that is, it's a, it's a half, I think a half inch, or an inch, mealing, milling with, with new surface put down.
There's not painting.
That'd be, that'd be your striping.
No, I'm just, I'm just about to-
And railroad crossing, um-
We had painted it one year, said he had, uh, said he had repaved, repaved it.
Yeah, since we have a local asphalt company coming, it might be able to reduce.
That is an asphalt company, not a paving company, that's two different things, anyway.
Two divisions.
That's what he's ordered to us as.
We have to put, we, we want to do something.
Um, but what?
But I think that is, it is, um, this is all, this is, this, those, that repaving would be inside the ordinance as it's currently written, it's considered part of the-
The council still has to approve.
Yes, exact, yes, but we don't have to change the ordinance.
Right.
Um, we can just put it into the budget and approve the budget.
And that's what you're talking about, right?
No, I don't know what you're talking about.
It would be, it would be put, those two line items in his list of suggestions, the paving of Oak Street.
Right.
Those could be put into the hospitality tax budget with the approval of the budget, without change-
Yeah, I was just telling her, that's what we're talking about.
Right, without changing the ordinance at all, because those would be considered the Batesburg district.
We're just saying, we're going to spend the hospitality tax money on, if we chose, on those two items.
Right.
Or we might say we're going to spend thirty dollars.
And we can come, and we can come back.
Well, it's, it's two different items, one south of the railroad, one north of the railroad.
Well, Oak Street, we're going to be doing it.
If I, I'm going to get a, legal opinion?
There is no problem with y'all amending this budget next month, if that's what you want to do. I, what I, I don't want to stop the discussion, because this is the most discussion y'all had about what you want to do with hospitality tax, and it's great. But, for the purposes of getting us past July first, the budget that's been presented gets us past July first. I don't, I think that what y'all may want to do, if Oak Street's what you want to do, I think it falls within the viability revitalization of downtown Batesburg.
Absolutely.
If all the ordinance has it written, direct them to go get you some, to do RFP for it, and then you come back and put the money, the exact amount, into that project.
From the hospitality.
And amend the budget, right, I, I, I just don't want you to throw money into a project right now within a budget that you, you don't know if that's going to cover or not, you're going to have to come back and amend it anyway. The budget right now takes the money and puts it into a savings account.
Right.
And that's what the budget is, y'all can amend that budget.
To sweep account.
Anytime you want to.
If they're setting for us to use.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm just saying, but, um, now, we do need to address, um, the maintenance issue in our hospitality clause, so that we can, um, I mean, I just, I think it's just kind of redundant, they got, you know, two hundred dollars in the inventory, you know that two hundred dollars is not going to do nothing.
Well, can, can we do that, can we do that later? Can we do that later and keep on going with the, with all the stuff that's in front of us?
The, the, the problem with doing that right now, Mr. Taylor, is, is that's not allowed by the hospitality ordinance itself, so before you can move that over, you've got to amend the hospitality.
Well, that's what you're talking about, right?
What I'm saying is that, the budget is an ordinance, you can amend the ordinance with an ordinance. And so, if we wanted to amend that, uh, language in the, in the hospitality, um, uh, ordinance, we can do that with the budget. I would not abide through that.
We want to, I would keep it clean, separate.
Understand what you're trying to do and ask, not the way to do it.
Well, I mean, you, you, you can keep it down, all of our stuff is codified.
We can have another line item on the agenda, we can have another line item, another agenda item, right, for that ordinance change, as opposed to putting it inside of the budget ordinance.
I would say, what do we do with inside this budget, or alongside the budget?
That's fine, what we-
Alongside, would be fair enough.
We'd have to do that first, though. How many readings does it take to, uh, to amend?
Well, you'd have to come back and amend, you'd have to come back and, just, two readings.
Okay, so when we do, when we- So, when we do the first reading on the budget, we can also do the first reading on the change, the amendment, correct?
If we can get it agreed, if we know, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, that's going to change the budget too, though.
Well, we'd have to come back and do an amendment on the budget after that.
Okay, that's-
We'd have to amend the budget, I mean, you'd have to come back and amend the budget after the ordinance is changed.
No, 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 you, you can do it in the, um, in the first reading, because you, you will know, when you, when, when you present us your first reading, right, you'll know that you, um, I wouldn't say zeroed out the line item, the twelve thousand, thirteen thousand in, in rec, in the rec line item, for example?
Yeah, sixty-three, sixty-four.
Okay, so, so fourteen thousand, um, you know that that would be zero, and that, that maintenance and, and whatnot is going to come out of the amount of hospitality fund. Right, that, that's what we're saying, right?
That's what, I'm, I'm not in agreement with that, but that's what you're saying, that's what I agree with.
Well, I understand what you're saying. Why you going to add two, he just talked about having, uh, to go to two different, um, ordinances to figure out what the one ordinance says, right? That money is not good for anything but maintenance.
Right.
So, why not just put it in the hospitality?
I would leave it there because it's been there historically, and it's, it's an easier way to track what's-
So, in my mind, but when the doctor took it off.
It did, it looked good.
We have to admit.
Maybe it did, I don't know.
I've talked about the same subject twice, Mr. Mayor, so I'll stay out of it.
No, I think we're okay in, in work session, it's okay, we'll let you have another, right now, I'm going to give it, right now, I'm going to give it back to the town.
You can speak more than twice, you can speak more than twice.
Hold on once.
As long as everybody else has had the opportunity to speak once.
Right, let's, yeah.
That's the rule.
I don't think it's-
The rule actually is you can't speak more than twice, period.
No, that's not the rule.
That is the ordinance that I read.
That's not, that's not Robert's rule.
I'm the, I'm the parliamentarian, that's what the ordinance of the town says, you're, what the ordinance of the town says, Mr. Taylor, you have orders, you speak more than twice to one issue.
Okay, you're not right, though. So, what, no, that's ridiculous.
That is what the ordinance says.
That's not what Robert's rule says.
The ordinance of the town, local rule, Robert's rule.
No, we, we adopted Robert's rules as far as the ordinance.
Only, only when an ordinance does not speak-
Okay, we're not going to argue about this, but that's not right, that's not right.
I'd like to give the floor to the town manager, please.
One thing I think, and, and going, going back to-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, let, let's listen.
Going back to the maintenance and, and, and repair, and slash possible utility side, uh, one concern I would have, and not advocating either direction, just pointing it out that it could, it's not as much of a problem now, but it could be a potential problem down the road, if we build splash pads or new bathrooms, um, at parks, or, or do things like that, you're talking about increased electrical cost, right now, the electrical costs are within the general fund. If, if we build a splash pad, there's going to be pumps, there's going to be those electricity costs, which is going to increase the electrical cost within the general fund, because that's where the expense line item is for electricity for the parks. So, I think we have to be somewhat considerate, and I'm not advocating, but I can see that becoming a problem down the road, that improvements made to H-tags could drive electricity and maintenance costs up, and, and that's going to be the general fund possibly absorbing those increases, tightening up the general fund, so.
That's why I wanted to-
I just-
No, and, and I, I see that.
Take it, take it out of it, yeah.
I can see it, and now, I know, we're not likely to have a splash pad.
It's a matter of putting a sunset.
Right.
But you are gonna be doing, you are gonna be doing some work that's going through a.
Rec, 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 maintenance call.
You don't know if you're gonna put a splash pad there, you might wanna put a splash pad there in, in, in this year, in twelve months, and you can do it.
Susan, did you have something else to add? Go, please.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I just, well, go ahead. I, I'm just saying that if we put a water park. I believe, and, and Mr. Bradley, you might correct me if I'm wrong, I believe if we say we're, we're gonna put seventy thousand in for a water park. And we're gonna allocate ten thousand for the maintenance of that park, so we're gonna, after eighty thousand, if we change the ordinance. To include maintenance, then, then we have the, we, we have the water park and the maintenance covered.
With you, but I would rather us have discussion among ourselves. This is not a legal issue.
There is, that, well, it's hospitality tax, and it is, it is.
Well, when we get to legal, then we can have legal advice, but not opinion.
I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
The reason I brought it up was because I want the committee to have these types of discussions, so that they can report the council. So we can start moving forward, since we have funds coming in from the hospitality, um, tax. Uh, because that's the purpose of it, to improve the, uh, quality of life here in baseball, at least, to attract others to the community.
But all ideas are acceptable inside of the hospitality tax. I mean, all ideas. Any citizen, anywhere, including all of us. As individuals can bring our ideas to the table for this.
I'm, I'm getting really concerned now about, about what Ted just said, because now, anything that we do with hospitality. It's gonna increase the maintenance. It's not gonna be, you can't do it. It's not gonna main, it's not gonna be the same, 'cause it's new equipment, it's a new building, it's new something. And it's gonna increase the, uh, the maintenance on it. We have to change that, um, the language in, in the, um, in the hospitality. Because this is something that we hadn't thought about.
So maybe we can put that as an agenda item and discuss that.
What do you mean agenda?
For future discussions.
For future meeting.
It's, it's, okay. But now, you're not gonna put, you're not gonna put, um, uh, that street pavement in, in, in the budget and not change the way that we can maintain it. That's, that's not gonna, that's not, you got, you putting more work on the street department.
By paving a street. By putting new pavement there.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be doing anything different than they did before.
They're gonna not sweep that, they're gonna go on the street. They don't, they don't, they don't maintain that main street, um, uh, now. The way that, that they should. And if you, if we spending a hundred thirty, a hundred thirty thousand dollars, you damn, you know, I, I wanna see that street sweeper. Going across there, more than, uh, more than usual. I wanna see, uh, I wanna see the trash picked up up there more than usual. I, I mean, why, why would you invest that kind of money and not give it more attention? You have to.
Well, certainly would increase, uh, the expense, uh, in some way, shape, or form, right? So we, we can consider that. Susan, you said you had some recommendation? Did you mention that earlier?
I, I think at some point, we need to have a discussion on the hospitality committee. I, I truly believe.
That takes us off of our budget.
Okay, yeah.
We're gonna.
I swear, we.
Let's stay on our budget.
It is not a budget thing.
Let's stay on our budget, please. Let's stay on our budget.
That's just ridiculous to, to be, um, adhering to an agenda like this, um, that strictly, uh, Mayor.
Well, I think we're talking about.
Something, sometimes you have peripheral, uh, uh, issues that can be addressed, that's not that far off of the agenda.
I, I think that's, I think we're, we're gonna stay on the budget. Thank you.
I think if you venture too far, I, I know.
I don't think that's too far.
You can talk committee ideas and stuff within the realm of budget, but if, if a too big of a discussion were to ensue about the committee. And the fact that that's not listed specifically, that there's gonna be discussion about the committee, I, I, I think you start getting on some FOI log. Because somebody in the committee may wanna hear about it.
Hold on, because if there's a question about the committee, we're not gonna allocate funds, um, uh, for hospitality. If there's an issue with the committee, we need to resolve that.
It's tied into the budget.
There's nothing.
We don't know what she was about to say. We don't know what she was about to say.
Yes, Mayor.
Let's stay on the budget question.
May we get back to the budget? Is any questions that will come out now?
Let's do, let's do.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Under council, we have nothing, zero under salary and wages. Uh, and I have a problem with that, as most of you all know. So I've been advocating for, um, compensation to council for years. And I'm gonna give you an example. Last week, someone, someone fingers stuck to my cellphone. And, uh, they did not return it. So I called Apple, and Apple informed me that it would cost me eight hundred and ten dollars to have that phone replaced. Now, I need a cellphone to serve as a councilman. I need lines of communication to my constituents and to anybody who wants to contact me. We need, uh, electronic devices, laptops and whatnot. We have to fund those ourselves. In addition to that, our time is worth, uh, something to councilman. As an example. If a person is working one full-time, maybe even a part-time job, with kids at home, trying to go to school. And trying to maintain their family, they may not have time to, uh, donate their time to serving on council. If the constituents in their district wants them to serve. And that's, to me, you can look at that as a form of discrimination. Because you're locking out anybody who wants to serve, and the people want them to serve to represent them. They cannot serve because council says the position is not worth anything, and no public fund should be allocated. For salary or wages to a person wants to serve on council. And, and I have a real problem with that. If a person wants to serve and they don't want any compensation, that's their prerogative. They can do that. But if a person needs compensation for the time that they're gonna spend to serve, and how much time do we spend going through this budget every year? Uh, these line items and whatnot, and among other things, meeting twice a month, plus any special call meetings. And going to training and whatnot, and all this stuff. Uh, it, it costs money. And I don't see anything in the budget for salary and wages. And I'd like to have a discussion on that.
From a legal standpoint, in a legal opinion, not a personal opinion. From a legal standpoint. We, we.
You can have him four. I'm, I'm giving him the four.
Hey.
It's okay.
The town manager's job is to present a budget to the town based on ordinances the town council with batch. Town council will not pass ordinance setting its own salary. If council wants a salary, it's gotta set an ordinance.
This is a line item.
Hold on one second.
We already have a line item.
We already do that.
But you haven't, there's, you have to pass a separate ordinance telling it be.
Hold on one second. Let's finish. I want him to finish, please. Everyone, order.
Legally, you have to pass an ordinance that says, this is what our salary is, so that he knows what to put in the budget.
We understand that, Council.
You've never done it.
Okay.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. Two years ago, we had, uh, an ordinance in place, paying council for thousand, four thousand a year.
I thought we just passed, then we just passed them to make.
Sir, but we had it, sir.
It had no number in it.
So we know how to do it.
Whether it's a number or not, we pass it so that we can put a number in. That's what we passed it for.
When y'all passed it, the night we had that discussion, I asked what the numbers should be put into the ordinance, and I was told we'll do that later. And the ordinance was passed without a number.
Okay, but the budget is the ordinance.
Another ordinance, not in the budget.
Why not? The budget is the ordinance. Why can't you put it in the budget? It's, it's.
It's a got to be a separate ordinance, by law.
Counselor.
Show me the law.
My law.
Counselor, counsel.
I'll find it for you.
Thank you, sir. We, 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 we received that. We, we.
But it's not a budgetary item until you pass the ordinance.
Sir.
Okay.
It's not in there.
And we can't get an ordinance until we have discussion, a budget discussion about it.
No, that's backwards. You have to have the ordinance before you put it in the budget.
Okay, you can do it simultaneously.
But we can still have discussion on it.
You were going to say we're gonna put it in the budget. All I'm saying is you can't do that.
He not putting it in the budget, he's trying to figure out amount that we can, so we can directly put it in the budget.
Well.
We won't have it in the budget then. I mean, this thing, come on, man. Y'all, y'all, uh, doing some, uh, flimflam and crazy stuff now. Okay, because.
Counselor, we hear you, we hear you. Whatever needs to be done, we can do that, right?
That's right.
That's all we need to know. That's all we need to know. We can do that.
Y'all knew what y'all were doing, uh, when we, what's the purpose of putting a line item in the budget if you weren't gonna fund the line item? It don't make sense. Why would you do that? That was just a waste of an ordinance if, if he's correct, which I doubt he is.
At that meeting.
What?
Charles made the motion. The question was asked, what's the number? And it was said, we'll do it later.
Okay, this is later.
I don't know if you were there.
This is later. Don't worry, where, where, about me.
Fair enough. It's, it's an ordinance, so we can't do that in a work session.
We can do an ordinance in a month.
Excuse me, can this be taped? This session be taped?
It's public.
Okay. I, I'm just asking. That's fine.
Yes, ma'am, I, I, I probably, I, I got a pretty good grip on what a citizen can do.
If you'd like to stand there, that's fine, but please, they have a floor, they, this, this council has a floor.
Lambs.
Ma'am, this council has a floor. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't fear.
Ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Charles, would you like to, or, Mr. Luckadoo?
I would like to, uh, move to discussion on, uh, council salary and wages.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever it takes to get that done. Council says we need to establish an ordinance, so be it. We'll do that. If, if that's council's pleasure to do that, but we, we just have a discussion.
In the budget, and have two readings on it. A budget is an ordinance.
So no one ever has any input in that area but myself?
Yeah, I think we, we definitely need to put, um, a salary in there.
Well, my question is, Mr. Mayor, if we've got a balanced budget, where is that X number of dollars coming from?
The thing about it is, that's his job to, to make that number.
That's what we're standing for.
Well, yeah, I agree with you there, but he's already presented us with a balanced budget.
Go back and find the money.
Proposed budget.
Right.
Right.
Well, we need to vote on that to whether or not we want it or not. If we don't want it, and we won't put it in that salary, something's gotta go.
Right, but that's his job to find out what goes and what stays. He has to do what council directs him to do. If we say that we wanna put.
You're right.
Okay, that's all. So it's not, it's not impossible.
So where do we direct him to take it from?
We don't, we don't.
That's his job.
I think.
I do wanna look it up.
I think, um.
It, this doesn't say nothing, Council. This, this doesn't say nothing. What does it say? What, what is it?
Mr. Mayor.
Where?
Counselor.
Can we stay on the budget?
All right.
Okay.
They can do that after the meeting.
Yeah. That's a state.
That.
What is it saying?
Point here.
Mr. Bradley, Mr. Bradley, fine.
Budget is an ordinance. It doesn't say that you can't do it with a, what, doesn't it say that you cannot do it with a budget ordinance?
Come back, let's come back.
Does it say that you can't do it without a board of members?
Miss Kane, Miss Kane, Miss Kane.
No, you let him, could you let him interrupt our meeting?
And I just told him to sit down. You just missed it, okay? No, no, it's, it's, it's fine. I'm not starting anything. We're gonna continue. We, we have, there's no charade about anything. Mr. Charles, Mr.
That is a serious problem.
Mr. Charles has the floor.
I have the floor.
Now, in the middle of me speaking, he's gonna jump up and go across.
Mr. Charles, please continue.
Come on, man. Yeah, y'all, y'all got, y'all got the, the, uh, the tail wagging the damn dog around here, okay?
Mr. Kane, Mr. Charles.
Mr. Kane, me, you let this man interrupt and, and disrupt our meeting.
And I, and I apologize, and I asked him to sit down, and he did, and he did.
He had no control. He didn't know that was gonna take place. That was spontaneous.
Down, and we're moving on. Mr. Charles, please, continue.
Last time I checked, I was a guy.
Mr. Charles, please continue.
I cannot, after twenty years serving on council, investing the time, the energy, and the efforts, whatever, uh, to whatever degree. Vote for a budget that has zero for council salary and wages. I'm finished. There's no way I can vote for that.
Mr. Mayor, could, could we have?
Yes, Susan.
If we're going to put that into the budget, and I know the town manager has to find where it's gonna come from. But it's, I feel it's our job to give him some direction of where it's coming from, so.
How he'll give it.
Well. If we're going to move a line item and put money under salary and wages. And we also have, how much do we have for council training and travel? Seventeen thousand five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, perhaps, perhaps we move that instead of training and travel. Just an idea.
Well, let's charge the manager. That's his job. That's what we're saying.
And we are.
We've been playing this game.
He gotta come back to us and say, look, I can, I found some funds, uh, there's just no way. They're not there, not there.
One at a time, one at a time.
He will come back, and if there's another project that comes up, he'll find the money. They'll move the money, when they need to move the money.
All right, I'm gonna.
Miss, Miss Mayor, I'm through.
I'm gonna give a floor to the town manager.
I, I, I think the amount discussion would need to occur to see what members would be agreeable to. So that I would then know how much I would have to go in search of.
I have, I have a suggestion. Uh, in addition to traveling, training, 'cause council need to learn the job. And, uh, so I, I, I recommend that those funds remain there, so that we can go to, um, sessions and learn what we are supposed to do as council people. And to cover our expenses, I would recommend six hundred dollars a month for council members and eight hundred dollars a month for the mayor. Which have additional, many additional duties than just council, councilman. Would you agree with that, Mayor? You have addition, additional duties, I mean.
I would agree that I have additional duties, yes.
Right, above and beyond just a, uh, regular councilperson, uh, minister into their district. And, um. From, which, if we decided to do this, that would, um, take place in December. With a new, new, new council coming in in November. In December, that would begin to June thirtieth, which would be the end of the, the two thousand nineteen, twenty fiscal year. And that will amount, those figures would amount to forty-four thousand six hundred dollars for those seven months. And that's, that's what we would need in the budget to, um, to implement, uh, if council's pleasure was to do that.
What was that figured, Mr. Charles?
Forty-four thousand six hundred.
Mr. Mayor, could I respond?
Yes, please.
I think we all run in our districts as a qualified representative for our district. We're telling our districts, we're qualified to represent you. Uh, I, I understand where you're coming from.
Let me just, let me just stick something in there, Susan. But remember, the old said to the best of my abilities. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, let's put.
Yeah. Absolutely. We all, none of us are to the best of our abilities at any time. But I do believe that we're saying to our districts, when we run, elect me because I'm qualified to represent you. And then if we say, but on the other hand, please put in the budget, money to train me to do my job. To me, that's kind of a dichotomy, dichotomy that just doesn't.
Did you go to college first, or did you go out and, and start your career first?
Uh, sir, I went to college first.
Prepare for that, right? In college, and then you went in and started your career.
I prepared first before I asked someone to give me a salary.
Exactly. So that's what we're saying. You need these funds in order to prepare to become a councilperson.
So you're saying that you don't wanna get paid until you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm through.
Can we just? Are you finished? You're finished? Oh, okay, she's finished. Yeah, go ahead. No.
I'm trying to understand. Are you saying that you don't wanna be paid until you get, um, certified by the municipal association?
I'm not saying that.
What, what exactly are you saying?
I'm saying that I felt qualified to run as a councilperson.
But you're not.
Well, yes, I believe I am.
You can't be because you don't know, you don't know the freedom of, you know all the freedom of information laws, you know all the things that the municipal association teaches you. So you don't need to go to any training, is that what you're saying? I'm just asking, I'm trying to understand, because this is a whole different animal. That's why they have a municipal association, and that's why they do the training. Am I right, Owen? I mean, am I, I'm not trying to disrespect her, but I'm just saying. There's a lot of stuff that you learn in those meetings.
And at least, at least half of our job is public relations. Getting to know the people in your district, forming relationships with them. Listening to their needs. How can you be trained to do that? That takes time and a genetic.
I'm just going here, Owen, because I, I don't, no disrespect.
Take a different position, please. I would, I would prefer that you do.
Oh, God, he's gonna get.
No, I would just.
But I'm not doing anything that I can't do as a citizen. If you want to have all this arrest, you may do.
No, I really, I really.
No, that's fine.
I really don't, but I think it's disrupting the meeting, being this close to the table.
I'm not disrupting. I want y'all.
Disrupting it right now, and you're not on the agenda, ma'am.
You're supposed to be.
Uh, uh, ma'am, I'm, I know, and I'm, I'm just asking to change, to change your position.
I wanna get back to what Susan was saying. Do you think that, um, do you, do you think that the, um, the, uh, training? I mean, you, you have to have training, right?
The municipal association has a training office that is there for one reason, one reason only. To train newly elected officials. The hows and the whys and the have-nots of how to run a town. Now, in order to get that professional training, you have to attend meetings. As the employees have to attend, they, uh, business license, SCUBA, clerk, treasurer associations. To pick up the nuggets that they need to be trained. That is not saying that. An average citizen out here has that training. They probably picked it up through other organizations. Okay? But the municipal association's purpose is to train all newly elected officials. On how to conduct business, how to conduct meetings, how not to talk over everybody else. How to ask questions, gotta ask permission to talk, and so.
And they do charge for that training.
They do charge for that training.
You have to invest time to get that training.
You have to invest time.
There is cost involved.
Mr. Charles, I have a question about, um. Uh, the compensation, you said the training and travel would remain in place, or the training and travel would go away?
Would remain in place.
Okay.
We need that training.
With that said, an annual cost, Mr. Manager.
Uh, I think what he, he gave.
Would be around.
If we maintain the seventeen five for council training and travel, or what would be, what he described beginning in December, it's seven month.
I wanna, I would like to know what, what an annual cost would be.
All right, so the annual cost was.
Sixty-four eight, sixty-four thousand eight hundred.
Travel or just the pay?
Sixty-four thousand eight hundred plus the training and travel.
The training and travel. The line item has training and travel in, included in it, correct?
No.
That's a different line item.
Two different sets of line items. So keeping, so keeping the, I'm just trying to get it in the, the cost, the total cost with training and travel and pay would be.
Why you wanna, why you wanna?
Because, uh, because, now, don't question my question. I'm gonna, I have a question. Thank you. No, I have a question, and I want my question answered. Thank you, thank you.
Well, council member Simkins has put out along with the seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, that's total a year ninety-three thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. With the training and travel included, annual cost. If you don't include the seventeen five that's already in the budget, it's a new cost of seventy-six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Um.
Annual.
And the, the last pay that, that, uh, council had received, um, before it was done away with, the, the last council. And that one did not include training and travel, correct?
Right, each member paid their own training and travel cost.
Which would be council.
And so this, I'm, I have a question, and let me ask my, let me ask my question. Yeah, please, thank you.
It was six thousand for the mayor, four thousand for council members, but they paid their cost for training and travel.
Total cost for that was forty-three thousand or so, correct?
Yeah, forty-three thousand.
So we're looking at a hundred and eighteen percent increase in our pay. in our pay.
A hundred and eighteen?
Hundred and eighteen percent increase.
No, 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 no.
Over what was paid last time, before it was done away with.
What?
You're going from the forty-three thousand-
From the forty-three thousand to the ninety-three thousand.
Man, can I?
Yeah, I mean, just saying, this is what I'm, this is what we're proposing.
But let, let me, can I say something about that?
Yeah, sure, certainly.
Okay, so when they did that, you know how many people went to training? Zero. Okay?
Yeah, not zero.
Well, two. Well, no, I don't know, did I go?
You did.
I didn't go, I did not go if I had to pay. I didn't go.
Annual meeting.
I didn't go if I had to pay. I went there, I sure didn't go.
You went to annual meeting.
Well, I didn't pay my way. I promise you, I didn't have no money. So I know I didn't pay my way. But all I'm saying is, so two people out of, out of nine went, okay? So, um, it's kind of, that's why I was saying about the apples and the oranges, because if you do that, you're not gonna have people trained, and then when you don't have people trained, that's how council gets off the, um, the, the, um, the road there a little bit and into the ditch, um, because they don't, they don't know what questions to ask.
Yeah, and I'm not question- Yeah, thank you, and I'm not questioning training. Absolutely important. I'm totally, totally for training. But I'm just, I'm looking at the base numbers of what was in that budget, you know, and what, what we're proposing, and it's a big increase.
Okay, but also, when we, when we, when we didn't have an engineer, oh, wait, 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 wait. When we didn't have an engineer, and we went along with no engineer, to Tim Schumpert.
Different fund.
To Tim Schumpert, that was a big, 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 big increase. When we had Cindy, that was a big, big, big increase. When we added, uh, fire trucks and police cars.
One more time.
Those were, those were, those were big, 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 big.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Comedy works in threes.
Midwest accent.
Comedy works in threes. It's fine. It's fine. I'm just pointing it out.
Professional council.
Absolutely.
And we are a growing town, correct?
I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm simply highlighting it.
When our former mayor and council pissed two point one million dollars down the drain on the water project, we didn't get any feedback from, uh, the public.
And speaking of-
And not only that, they sent him back to council to serve and represent him again, after he resigned.
Thank you. Um, wouldn't anyone be interested in taking a little break, because I would like to hit the restroom, a little food, and we need to vote on this to make it official.
Those NBA finals are like, right?
Um-
They play all night long, you'll be okay.
Say long, um-
Conference Finals, sorry.
If I could-
No, we don't need to vote on it.
We, well, I would like to, I would like to motion into a recess if I can. Owen made the motion, and Mr. Kane made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, I, can we, can we? Alright, so we are in recess. Thank you.
Might have played down there.
Everybody else has their turn. It'd be an extra turn.
That's just like, um, doing your books, and then your, and your accountants letting you, uh, we don't have any money left to pay you, uh, anything for a personal profit for running your business here, because it's all taken up and expensive.
In that, in that scenario, that's my fault. It's business owners.
And that's why we're having this discussion.
Well, right. I, I am in agreement with the council's decision. I, I, I think, in my opinion, those numbers are too high. Um, as far as-
Well, if what the manager has next is, okay, I found forty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars that we can use. And, uh, what makes it two hundred?
But you don't know.
But the nine, three thousand is all my name. I, I enjoy it, I, I enjoy it.
We oversee an eight million dollar budget, and ninety-three thousand dollars comes to save the nation. Less than a hundred thousand dollars out of a eight point sub-million dollar budget. We can't invest ninety-three thousand dollars to come and save the group that's responsible for overseeing the entire operation of the town. The watch though, has no doubt.
Well, when I ran-
Wouldn't you be ashamed to sit and say, uh, I've been on council twenty years and have done crap. Own that edge tag for me. We can't have me because that's hard.
I ran what's, what's going on, at the time. Well, I'm in agreement with you on compensation, and that. I, I volunteer a lot for a lot of the work, and a lot of the support, adding one more volunteer thing to, to oversee. I mean, obviously, I, I get paid in words to watch budgets. It's part of what I do.
We must have the time to take on another volunteer position.
Apparently I did.
So you had, you had time to do that, and that's fine, that's fine. The people want to do it for free. They can choose to do that. They can donate that money to charity, the youth, the children, whatever.
Yeah, I, I understand your point.
We a little town that don't have condos and apartments that people need to walk their freaking dogs. But you, you, you kept on talking to them. Yeah, I understand the conversation. No, I'm saying how much stupid I did. When we had that tag, I told them, I said, "Listen to me." That is the dumb, I mean, you went out and I, I've been to Greer and Greer in these places that look, it doesn't cry.
In a way.
You didn't hear me say nothing.
I can say supported, I said, "You should crush that idea, kill the baby in the bassinet when he catch down the mayor's mouth."
That doesn't have to go to the miss.
We've got, we've spent a lot of time here. Here we are, tonight's been a three, four hours, or whatever turns out. Um, and there should be, there should be some compensation for that. Um, I just, my, my opinion is-
But anything that is held public and then, and then for sale to tell me that, that I needed to come back out here and film. Well, hell, when y'all was sitting on there-
Material they need to do their job.
Is it wrong to, don't, don't, because I want Charles Simkins constituents to know what is going on.
We, on the other hand, are not full-time. We've got a few hours tomorrow.
Well, they let Todd Odell stay on the council floor. Todd Odell don't win.
I'm jammed up. But, uh, it turns my schedule. So when people come to me and say, "Look, would you run, would you represent us?" We need, uh, we need this, we need that, we're not getting it. Would you be representative? I do not, and I'm really, I'm willing, look, I'm doing it out of a great need.
Six hundred dollars, I'll never quit to it. They'll buy my story, because they know why I'm here. The pay, the man, six hundred dollars when he's already kept paying on the tour, and this is what, hell, they don't know what next.
We've all got our, um- We've all got our, um-
And don't know nothing about it.
The funny thing about that is- But we not a part of John Ward. If we was part of John Ward, we would-
I, I see where you're, where you're coming from. And I guess we all, because of our, our different perspectives, we just see that.
And that's, and that's okay. But I'm just saying, I'm, I'm advocating for the needs of this to do.
Well, that's what we all basically signed up for.
And then I talk to people, you know, I, I would say that, but, you know, I can't say that. I got to work. I got to get a paid part-time job. Already have two jobs. And I'm working two jobs, because I, I do it to myself. Because if I take on another part-time job, I got to get paid, so I can't say that. Even though that person would be a great representative, and this, um, and see, I look at that as discrimination. Because it's not, it's intentional, that we're not gonna pay anything to council. We can only get people to, uh, and afford to be a student. When they may not get a test fee.
In the, well, we got a lot of not the best people in the league office. There have been a lot of those guys in, in the upper level. Some of them are very well-off, and some of them are, are not so well, so you get into the, uh, the, the, I guess. Obviously, they've got, um, they've got any- Well, that's, that's my point as far as, kind of, some, some compensation. Basically, citizens- He isn't a representative of the county, and I don't be crazy. And, and obviously, when that, when that, and basically said to, to everybody else who wants to run, anybody who's considering running, we want you to serve for free, in, in essence, what it all boils down to. Um, and nobody, nobody wants to look at it and say, "I'll jump on board with this thing and, and be harangued and embarrassed and video recorded," and all that kind of stuff, for, um, for nothing.
You better be.
I don't know.
Are the uphones to these vendors playing?
I guess, the only, the only place I've hit, I just do, I think, is this case. I don't, I really don't get a break. Very bad, and probably likely. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, I'm, I'm late.
And that's what most people do. So, hey, this is crazy, I'm going all three days, but nothing. Yeah, I'm out of here. That's what most people do, and that's why you have a big turnover.
Yeah, and that, and that, and what you see in place in this, in the single being-
Yeah.
For, for very green, you want it. And they have the same thing up there, maybe not back here. They actually have water with the leg, they got, in Columbia, Ohio, and, um, um, what they all have.
Um, I don't agree with the way that I, I have to study this another person. Then what I perceive is that law, um, uh, a little bit, God, God knows, they're being lost.
One of the, uh-
Let's go, round ten.
Things that citizens have said about serving for, the thing is that the school board serves, but not that they don't have any compensation. But most of those, um, councilman or school board have kids in the system, and once their kids are out of the system, they are out of the world.
I'll tell you one thing, Charles Simkins. That if council is paying six hundred dollars, I'm gonna have at least three damn people running against me.
Of course it would, yeah, yeah. And, but that's a good thing.
Too good for you.
That's a good thing, yeah. And that's one of my points, that people can't serve because they can't afford to serve. As long as they do the job they committed to doing. But then that's the people's prerogative, to, to remove them or to continue.
What do they pay you now? You need to find me a department. But that, that happens to me, um, four times a month. Well, maybe you need to be in the department business. Well, and that's the thing, the ordinance is implemented, we just gotta do the next one to get the finances.
The finance, correct. And we, we are one vote short. So you are the swing vote.
I, I couldn't support it that long, and it's just in, in my mind, it's just a- What devil you reckon? Where it got left off previously. Noted. I got some breathing in? I'm sure the game is on now, though.
What do you, what would you say would be four?
Got the motion to come back in? Uh, no, we gotta take a motion. Uh, Mr. Proust making a motion to come back into session. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gambrell. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. If I could, get this back in session. Thank you. We're back in session. Alright. Any other comments on this, uh, topic? Any other discussion?
Wait, what are we doing? Is he gonna, uh, find the money or what?
I think we should charge the manager with, uh, looking, taking another look at the budget to see if there's a possibility of, uh, finding the forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Would you all agree with that?
Excuse me, is, can we be doing this?
Can we what?
I just wanted to know what they were doing.
Along with that, since you're gonna propose that, would it not be advisable to go ahead to have an ordinance written? The necessary ordinance written to make this legal?
First and second reading as we pass the budget.
So are we, are we, an ordinance based on the amount that you proposed?
I'm, I'm, I'm not for that amount. That's not, except, that's me personally. Um, that, that amount's not acceptable to me personally. Um, uh, it's, it's, uh, I feel like it's a, a subordinate.
You have an amount in there?
No, it's not, it's not out of the question. I just, it's too much.
We're gonna lower the amount. Let them find, see if you can get to that amount, and we can always lower it.
You can go down, that, down the stairs better than you can go up.
You can always go down, you just can't go up. So let them find the, the max that Charles asked for, and then we'll decide somewhere in the middle.
We got a, a question to council, that if we, can we do first and second reading on finding that ordinance as we first and second reading on the published budget?
All I gotta do is print out the one that we have for, because it's got a blank in it that, I was gonna take, all I gotta do is put the same one that's out. The, the only issue is that y'all have got to agree on a number before you have first reading.
Right.
I mean-
We can do that.
But all, and, 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 Mr. Kane, I don't wanna argue with you. You can do it through two steps, two, but it's got to be a separate one. And that's just, if you're doing it at the same time.
Can, can it be, it can, I assume it can be done in conjunction, first reading, um, with council pay in conjunction with the first reading of the budget?
Right.
And they both pass second readings roughly at the same, I'm, I'm not saying, there will be, there'll be different votes taken for each ordinance.
Yeah, they can be done in the same meeting.
Better way to do it, but can you do it that way?
Yes.
No, that's what I was getting at. We're running out of time, so.
Mr., may I have a thought?
Yep.
Um, I'd just like to go on record that I would have a hard time voting for a budget that included council pay.
Okay.
Well, Ted. So we're gonna ask the administration to, uh, take a look?
Are we going to try to agree on a number?
I think we should get a number.
As, as a group.
See if we can find some money first, then let's see.
Well, the next time we meet, we're gonna need to have this, this ordinance passed.
We can do that at the same time. I'll be honest, I, I would prefer to be kinda given a number, but it's whatever y'all wanna do, uh, if I could have a number to work with, that's.
Well, I can't get a.
So seventy, so seventy, well, let me, alright, let me, it would be seven months in this current budget.
Right.
So.
Equals how much, seven months equals?
About forty-five thousand.
And that, is that just?
Twelve months equals seventy-one.
So that's seven months per month times.
I think.
Seven months, was it forty-four, six hundred?
Yes, forty-four, six.
Yeah, that's what I, forty-four thousand, six hundred, and that's based on the amount.
It's six hundred.
Six hundred.
Six hundred for council, eight hundred for mayor, a month.
And as we do everything, if you disagree, vote against it, and you can justify, if it's council pleasure.
If, if I may make this statement, um.
No.
I think if you're gonna run simultaneous ordinance, I think if you guys could, uh, if we run a simultaneous ordinance based on six hundred for council, eight hundred for mayor, and it doesn't have the support, but you're running a budget that budgets for that amount at the same time, and then that doesn't pass, but you pass a budget with that amount, that, I, I think if you guys could kinda see if there's a consensus agreement amount, I don't know, there may be a consensus agreement.
But that's, that's what legislation is all about.
Right, but, well.
I, I, I wanna point one thing out.
If that were to fail, would it count the budget amount for that?
Right.
It could present problem.
Mr. President.
Even if the money is not found in this budget, if council votes next month, if we do an ordinance after this budget's passed, and says, this is what our pay is gonna be, he has to find the money.
Right.
There is no choice, the best practice would be to pass the budget the way it is, if you won't council pay, then let's do an ordinance, pass it, and then he'd have no choice but to find it.
Have council pay.
We'd, we'd vote for a budget that doesn't have any.
But I think what he's saying is, if you do pass an ordinance, then establishes council pay, we're forced to go, what's funny?
But we have voted on a budget with one, uh, budget, then an alternative budget, and at the meeting, we determine which one we've been voted, we've done that in the past also.
We've done a lot of things in the past. So. Well, well, I'm saying, while we just, find the money at Charles's rate, if we decide that we wanna get less, you can always get less, you just can't get more, right?
Well, you can, if you gotta find it now, you can find it later.
Well, maybe find it later. I mean, that just don't make sense to me, um.
We may not just, we may not agree, but where we find it.
He is gonna be charged, with finding whatever we instructed him to do. Right, so let him find it now.
Instructed?
I'm not instructed, y'all are instructed. Ted, you, okay, no, you said it, Ted, you were instructed to find, uh, eight hundred dollars for Lancer and six hundred dollars for Council, you were instructed.
Forty-four thousand, six hundred. Is that a motion?
How about two hundred and three hundred?
No, we're just, we're just asking him to look.
Alright.
And once he come back to us, then we will move from there.
Um, alright, what's wrong with going back to the way it was previous?
Four and six?
Yeah.
Whatever, you talking about annually?
So that was, that was, uh.
Didn't we just give everybody a cost of living?
Three hundred and, three hundred and thirty, we gave them two percent, but we're giving ourselves a hundred and eighteen, so that's my, that's where I'm stuck. I'm stuck on that, stuck on that. Well, I, you know, that's, that's fine, I gotta sleep at night, um.
You, you slept at night when you was paying Tim Chumpet ninety thousand dollars, you slept at night? After he cost us, uh, a couple of million dollars, you slept at night?
Who hired him? Hey, you, we wanna go down that rabbit hole, we don't want to, let's stay off that.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not.
Point of order, make it work.
Thank you, thank you.
Order or? We are a council, we're not individuals, we, we're a council, we, we enact laws.
What it was before, uh, what, what it was before was, let's see, the mayor was five hundred and, and the council was three, three, three dot three, three, is that accurate?
It, it was equivalent of six thousand for mayor, four thousand for council, on annually. Now, when you say go back to the way it was, does that, the way it was, was council paid for training and travel, or is that maintaining training, travel funded line?
There was no training and travel in that.
That's exactly right.
Right, so there was really not compensation. It was expense reimbursement.
And I would lower mine down to the same as council.
Alright, six hundred for everybody.
No, I'm, I get.
That's what he said.
No, no, no.
He was going that.
Well, no, I think, I think his.
Well, the bottom line is, the vote would determine what the number is.
And that's fine, too.
So we're just speculating now, at this point.
Our, our budget's being hung up on what we're paying ourselves.
No, we're not hanging the budget up.
And, and we're asking to increase, increase our pay a hundred and eighteen percent.
You keep saying a hundred and eighteen, we said like that means something.
It does.
It does mean something.
It does, it does.
If it was ten dollars last year, a hundred and eighteen percent is eighteen dollars.
Right, so is it no meaning, Dave, that's the numbers.
No, it's, it's there, it's there.
It's the numbers.
It's from forty-three thousand to ninety-three thousand, I think that's big, I think it's big to.
Well, it's real big, it's real big, we're hard.
As, as a city mayor.
I think that's big to staff, I think that's big to, um, employees, I think it's big to citizens.
Let me ask you a question there.
But then don't vote for it.
Let me ask you a question there.
Then don't vote for it.
And that's fair, yeah, I'm just, but I'm, well, okay, now listen, I'm, I'm talking, I'm just expressing myself.
Be conscious, so let's see what comes out. That's what they told me for twenty years, go ahead and vote with, however you want to, we'll, we'll see how it ends up. So, you, we don't need to continue to discuss it, let's have the manager to look, and come, get back to us, and then we go to first reading.
So. So what would that, what would that ti- timeline look like, then? What would that, so, um, the manager goes and, and makes cuts, and then we, I have to look at the cuts that the manager made and agree to those cuts, whatever he made, to get another, I mean, to, to essentially get ninety-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay?
No, 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 forty-four, six, until June of next year, June thirty.
For this budget, it would be.
Right.
Right, not right, okay.
Now, next year, we would have to come up with that additional.
Ninety-three, yeah, I mean, that's the ultimate number.
And we're gonna go through this whole process again, this time next year, we deal with that at that time.
And miss, mister mayor?
You have an ordinance put in place, it's done.
But I'm telling you, the funding is pushing it.
Oh, the funding. If, if the ordinance is in place, he didn't have a choice but to.
Right.
Just so y'all understand, we're gonna try to figure out that the timing, how all of that happened.
Yes, sir. Well, this is, that's a question, that's a question.
That's what council does, he's trying to be the tenth councilman. That's what we do, we set the timeline, if we wanna meet again in two days, we can meet again in two days.
No, the timing.
No, no, I think, I think.
Okay.
I had the question, actually, of Ted.
I think I know where he's going with this, we have requirements on public hearing notice, and, and being able to, trying to get this in before July first, I, I, was that your great?
No, it's fine.
That's, that's where we're going, best practice is, is to have the final reading at a regular council meeting, if we have our final reading at regular council.
You don't have to have a final council.
Hold on, just let him finish, let him finish, let him finish, just let him finish. And then, and then we'll move on, hold on, it's just legal, this is legal, this is.
It's not legal. It's his opinion.
That doesn't make it right.
It's not, it's not a legal opinion.
No, no, no.
Point of order, please.
It has nothing to do with a law, it's the, well, coun- it's council's practice, what we're about to do.
There is a, we're talking about, we're actually talking about the calendar and the number of days that we have to post, and have a public.
Right, but that's not enough to do with a legal opinion.
Public hearing, um, legally, legally, we have to have a public hearing, do we have to have public, do we have to have a public hearing legally?
We all know that. We do have to have a public.
We have to do two readings legally?
We have to have two readings and, and a public hearing.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Teddy, will you please finish, can you finish, do you understand?
Well, no, I, I would, I just confirmed whether or not that was where he was going with that.
We know that.
Yes. Fifteen days, right, so if your second, if your second reading is at the regular council meeting in June, that means we have to start publishing by May the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Okay.
All I was trying to do is to give you the timeline, but we, we know that, cause we've been on council, telling them council twenty years, we know that.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Um.
I just have one last comment, then I'll be quiet. Are we gonna say to people that come before our council, in this budget, with our budget, that we're giving ourselves pay, and we're not going to pave streets, and we're not gonna do some other things that we can use our ninety-eight thousand?
Listen, listen, nobody came to council and said, crap crap, when we, when we wasted three million dollars on that water project, nobody came to council and cried to council about that, nobody, nobody, even today, nobody's even seen a thing about it.
Nobody.
Mister Mayor, I think I have.
Send him back to council.
Mister Mayor, I think I have the table position, whatever it's called.
Okay, go ahead, please continue.
I'm through, I just wanted to make that statement.
Certainly, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Um, I don't think we have a, a number yet, do we have a number yet?
We can, he can.
That we can all agree on?
Did you agree with six hundred to rest council?
No, I don't, I think it's too much, I think it's too much for, for, for our side.
Okay, well. Well, let's just say six hundred crossed the board, including the mayor, that would reduce that figure.
There you go.
That's what he just said, right?
Yeah, if he thinks it's too much, maybe you don't wanna get back.
Right, he can donate his.
Yeah, so, well, he can just take it out.
To the Dreamcats, they need it.
We just take it out, just take his salary out, completely. You know, I got the wrong, um, priorities to here, all that money we wasting in town.
No, I, I just think this, I just think.
And then you don't wanna pay council, are you kidding me?
That's not what I said, I think the number's too high, compared to other mi- compared to other municipalities, I just think it's too high.
Well, we got to vote on the numbers. We're gonna vote on the numbers, that's gonna solve that problem.
Well, Mr. Paul, what, what? Oh, wait.
You would vote yay or nay?
Wait, what would Mr. Paul, you compare this to?
The ones that I looked up on the.
Which one of the, which ones you looked up on, uh, has a, a wastewater treatment plant?
And is the size a base for these?
The size base, where's the wastewater treatment plant?
They're all, they're all, I don't, I don't, I don't have that.
What a water plant?
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay, well, then, no, you, you know, you, you, you just talking, you just talking.
Apples and oranges.
Well, it's my opinion, and I'm talking, and.
Yeah, your opinion's not based on nothing, though.
But the bottom line is, the.
You can't say, based on the towns outside, the towns outside don't have a water plant, wastewater plant. Most of them didn't have an engineer, or a certified engineer on staff.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of them don't, a lot of them outside don't have a assistant town manager, so you do apples to apples, don't do apples to oranges, trying to make a point.
No, that's fine.
Right.
I mean, a- any, any, anyone else have any comments to add?
New council member didn't sign in, to give me any input, what's your thoughts on compensation for council, being a new council person, for the newest?
Yeah, the newest, very, learning.
You don't have to put her on the spot like that, you don't have to answer that.
I just thought maybe she had a concern.
No, she don't have to put her on the spot like that, she has her thoughts.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, to go, to go back, um, it was forty-four, six hundred, it, the mayor's was taking to the same six hundred dollars a month, it would be binding forty-three, one hundred.
Forty-three, one.
Yeah, so about fifteen hundred dollars. And that's just for clarification to statement, question, whatever we have.
Right.
I guarantee you, nobody gonna return their check if we get it, Rita Crap's talking all that junk about not getting paid, she took that check. Every, one, that's one of us casting check.
Motion to adjourn.
Are we through with the agenda?
I have a motion, I have a.
Please, come out, please, what, what's my timeline for coming up with this?
ASAP.
If, if we have a special call meeting at our next proposed work session, if it's a special call meeting, would that give us enough, enough time to have the second reading?
You can schedule a work session and then a call meeting, and then directly after that, take a vote, you can do a vote in the same night, you have a work session and a call meeting at the same time. It's just two different meetings, you, the adjournment will start with that. But like I said, would.
But you can't do a first and second reading.
You gotta, you can do a first reading, you can do first reading and a call meeting.
And second reading at the regular council meeting, Jim.
At least seven days later.
Seven days later.
Actually.
No, I think seven's right.
You have to have first reading before May twenty-seventh, to have fifteen day notice in the paper for the.
Public hearing, public hearings.
Then you have a meeting on.
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days, that's the catch.
So, that's where you get the five day. And you have twenty-seven to accommodate, so, law, law, state, there, so, so literally, you would have to have this done next week.
Yep, yep, yep.
Next week.
Next week.
There it is.
Monday, the twentieth?
Um.
Is overtime included in our salary?
What's that?
You're eligible for state, you're eligible for state retirement.
I might best start.
I don't.
Those eligible for state, and that, that's where, in looking at this, some people are eligible for state, some people are not, if you've previously been in the state retirement system, you're currently in, Mr. Gambrell, you were in, Mr. Charles, you were in. You were previously in.
She's in.
Uh, so, those that have been in the state retirement system, retirement would be taken out, if you've never been in the state retirement system, if, retirement would not be established, based on council pay. That was something I had to get clarification on previously, cause I heard some members have the county coming out, and some didn't, but that was.
For, for, for Charles, the, what the town did.
Mister Mayor, do we need to establish that date before we leave this meeting, for our next meeting?
Would be nice.
Well, yeah.
Um, do we do any, everyone is in agreement on that date, Monday, is that okay?
Yeah.
This coming Monday?
Does that give you enough time to find it?
Is that gonna be enough time for you?
I will, I will have, I, I will come with what options I can present, so, I will, I will dive into it.
Just take that half way.
Mister Mayor, may I ask this question?
Yes.
Is there anything else council wants to discuss, excluding the salary, so that we may move on next Monday? Are we done, we did the whole budget, right?
Yeah, I think council salary is the only.
Is there anything else we need to discuss pertaining to the budget? Wait, I do want to be clear about something, I'm just saying, did we decide that we wanna change that language in the, in the hospitality, so we can do maintenance, or no? What is that?
No.
No, no, we're not gonna.
I think that's a later discussion.
We'll do, we'll do it later, it's fine, we have time. But I think, I think we're all in agreement with that, Mr. King, but.
Mister Mayor?
So, we're, uh, I, alright, so let me, can I, can I have any questions?
Yes.
Alright. Monday, next Monday night, what I may consider doing, is, is, is turning to start sessions, where, start with work session, maybe put a posted possible special meeting, if, if all this gets worded out, there could be, would be a first reading even next Monday night, if it gets agreed to, anything gets agreed to. Are, are we not gonna be able to do that?
We're just wanting to be prepared.
No, I wouldn't, I'm gonna bring the ordinance to a blanket, the ordinance will have a blanket, we're gonna fill it, number it all.
Should I follow a work session with special?
What's gonna happen if you have a work session to discuss, that's the only issue on that, then you go have a special call meeting, first reading on the ordinance, and first reading on the budget.
Can we do a, a public hearing also?
That, that would.
That's gotta be.
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days, that's a problem.
Okay.
So you gotta have a first reading on the ordinance to establish council pay, and first reading on the budget.
Work session, follow my special reading.
Right.
Alright, that's what I wanted to get clarification, I'm good, I'm done.
Mister Mayor, do we adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, the first and the second, um, any discussion, all in favor, or everybody, ready to go home?
Yeah.
Alright, we're going home, thank you.
Thank you, Ted.